Good evening, everyone. The first piece of the presentation tonight is going to be about our bullying, the things that we've been doing at Vernon Heights to have an anti-bullying campaign. Some of the things I passed out, some handouts with some examples of things that we've been doing. On the front cover, my social worker is run a kindness tree and a monthly kindness award. We just had it last week in assembly. The kids get a munchkin and it's really fun. You get some little time with the adults and they get to be together. The social workers are also working on lunch bunches, which is really amazing. I've sat in some of the lunches and some of the things they talk about are just funny. Sometimes it's sad, but overall it's amazing. As of today, well, as of January 4th, I looked at my book. I don't have any incidents of bullying recorded at my building. If you look into the folder I gave you back on, let's see if it was the last page, where it says, "Is it bullying?" It's the third to last page. I use this daily. I use it with students, I use it with parents to not to deter, but to educate the differences between just being not nice, being mean, or being bullied. And a lot of times I'll come right out and say, "Where do you fall?" It's only been one time, so I said, "Where do you put it?" And he said, "I think that kid was just being mean to me." Okay, how would it be bullying? Or if it was multiple times over days and weeks and it kept going on? So I use this as well with parents. Because they'll come right in and they'll say, "My child's being bullied." And I'll be like, "Heh, let's see where we fall onto this." And they will say, they don't know the whole extent of what I can try to educate them as well. But this is a powerful tool that I use. Let's see, and then also we've used bulletin boards. And a lot of our boards are designed for anti-bullying and kindness. I've taken pictures, you can just see them. It's a really warm, warm school. If you've come to my building, you walk in, you really feel the sense of community, the sense of like we own our building, it's our building, and we're proud of our building. So that is an impressive part. And I just, all my teachers and the children, the students have done an amazing job. We've spent so much time on the social emotional learning over the last three or four years that it's really, we're really seeing it come together. But we're going to continue our mission on this. We know the detriment to being bullied. It can't be fun, as long as we can keep educating them, we will keep doing that. And tonight's, the next piece of this, tonight will be the students presenting holiday in different cultures. So it's a nice way to be, have our students learning the different cultures and values of different families, different cultures, and so we can, you're going to see it's really, it's really top-notch. I told them that three years in a row we were number one, and tonight's no different. So we got this. And they said they're not even nervous. I said, "I am." And then this goes back quite a ways. This goes back a long time from an old friend of ours, George Masoodi. We still use "Give respect, give respect." We use it a lot, and that's going to probably live on forever. So we are proud to continue that. We still have George's picture posted around our building, so that's that. That's my bullying report. If you wouldn't mind coming down if you could, and then we'll drop by. I brought some teachers with me today. I have Ashley Haley with me, Deb Sears, Anne Verenti, Stephanie Patikos. Kristina Tellia wasn't able to make it, but I believe she is online listening. These are my fifth grade teams, and they're the ones who did the, are going to do the presentation tonight, so they came together. Oh, I'm sorry, we have Kim Roder and we also have Kim Pierce. And we were able to bring in different contents, the art and music into this as well. And Ian Rollins. Ian Rollins. Okay, did I miss anybody? Thank you, parents for being here. Just Ashley is going to come up.
Hello. All three fifth grade classes collaborated with the innovation specialists, planned, designed, and launched this anniversary. Students worked in teams to research and create these books. The students here today are Callie, Alec, Derek, Annabelle, Christabel, Joseph, Owen, Elias, Christian, Janelle, and Ariana. Derek is going to tell us what they learned, why they learned it, and how they demonstrated their learning.
What?
Come on up, honey. Stop it, you all can hear you.
What? We are learning about different cultures and meet what your celebrations are. We are learning about our global community so that we can be well-informed global citizens. We will read a storybook with images explaining a unique holiday as a team. We will present this to an audience.
Students discussed as a team what competencies for success they'd work on with this project. Students were able to justify all six competencies. Callie is going to come up and talk about why it's important for us to learn about cultures.
We had a lot of reasons why it's important to learn about different cultures, but these two still have. To learn how and why people celebrate different cultures and to help us work with our global community.
So Christabel and Joseph are going to come up and read their story.
"Quanza," by Christabel and Joseph.
What is Quanza? Quanza is an African-American holiday that means birthroot. Quanza is a winter holiday.
How long is Quanza? Quanza starts on the summer 26th and ends on January 1st every year. Each day represents a special meaning.
Where is Quanza celebrated? Quanza is celebrated in Africa and was made by a man named... I can't remember.
Important symbols for Quanza. Every part of Quanza is unique, which is everything in Quanza.
Traditions of Quanza. On Quanza, a person lights each candle for each day. The person who goes first is the one who comes.
What's the Quanza? People eat special foods during Quanza, like Chinese soup. Who deserves to play five minutes and sit a pot.
Music for Quanza. People play African music and dance to it. Sometimes I put on a show with people dancing.
Games for Quanza. One game that they play during Quanza is called "Momma Hobbler." They take you or people play "Blossom Hubble."
Question. You were celebrating Quanza, what day of Quanza would you have been?
Additionally, students made books for students with visual impairments. Derek and Callie will talk about CBI.
CBI is a visual impairment and it is a disorder caused by visual damage to the brain.
Finally, made CBI books. We made books for high schoolers with CBI. The books needed black backgrounds with red or yellow boxes. We will read these books to the high schoolers. They needed to have simple sentences with one or two sentences.
Annabelle and Alec will come up and read their CBI book.
Donkey is celebrating lost possessions at a party.
Donkey is celebrating lost possessions because his family does.
Donkey is putting on his clothes.
Donkey arrived at the party during December 16th to December 34th at 3:00 P.M.
Donkey is having a blast.
Donkey is looking at the ladder as a pressure.
Donkey meets his friends so they can go get.
Donkey is a very good student here at the end.
Donkey is eating tomorrow night.
Donkey is having a blast.
Donkey is going home.
Donkey can't wait till next year.
Students in room 21 read their stories and their CBI books to all three kindergarten classes. And before we invite you to take a look at our padlet to see all of their storybooks, we did want to mention that we were able to integrate the itinerants into this project. They learned Hanukkah songs and music, African drumming in gym class. They researched during library and they also created a Chinese dragon and Chinese lanterns for Chinese New Year in art. And then we're going to have a quick presentation with the Chinese dragon.
Thank you for having us tonight. I hope you enjoyed that. Wish the kids, that would have been a little bit louder, but a little shy. Ah, they were great! Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank, take this out, and we're going to thank you all from Vernon Heights. What a great set of presentations. Thank you, Matt. Now we'll go in and public good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please comment. Okay, let's try this again. For public good and welfare, so far, anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please begin with your name and address, your comments, and the one and five minutes of your time, and should be included in the form. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team, or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. If there are anyone who'd like to address the school committee this evening?
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Bell. I am at 650 Third Avenue in Wood Socket. I know that these are usually posted on YouTube for all to hear, for those who cannot attend. I noticed that there was a Wi-Fi issue at the last meeting, so I wanted to reiterate what I discussed and what my son had discussed at the last meeting. I do know that at the last meeting you did say that you wanted to hear from the community, and I very much appreciate it before any decision was made for the three schools, the Vernon, Coleman, and I honestly forget the third school, so my apologies, that would be moved over to Berryfield. I am going to read my son's comments, as he could not be here tonight because he was a little tired and he said, "Mommy, I have school tomorrow." He says, "My name is Cody Heatu. He also lives with me, 650 Third Avenue. We have, we already have so many abandoned buildings in the city. Why should we add to the list of empty buildings when we can just repair them? And now for the second time, please, don't get rid of my school." And then I have some comments from other parents who could not be here tonight. A couple of them are lengthy, so I will actually start with the one that I didn't read last time. She's, this is from Melissa Barrard, and she says, "I just want to send in my advocacy towards neighborhood schooling versus the campus. The children book past burning students and current ones. The parents in our community would be devastated to be incorporated into one big unit. They need their own community identity. I propose a, I propose building an annexed school that could take on one of the existing elementary school's population, only during which time each individual school would get their much-needed facelift. There is no reason that these buildings cannot be rehabilitated, instead of tearing down old to build a giant new. The annexed school could be, could then be used as an overflow school, another annex for pre-K or maybe even, maybe a replacement for one elementary school, but not a combined three on one campus. In Cumberland, they are using this model and putting one elementary school into the high school transitional building while redoing the necessary facelifts on the current school buildings. They are currently on the second elementary school remodel, and I think this would be a more logical step for our city. I urge you to please look into a modification that is not quote-unquote "the campus." Thank you, parent and current Vernon PTO board member." I believe I have room for the second one. Please stop me if I go over. My name is Melissa Murphy Gardner. My family and I bought a home in Wood Socket minutes away from Vernon Heights back in 2017. One of the biggest selling points was how close we are to the school and had heard many good things from friends and families who raised children who went to Vernon. Since the moment my children was enrolled, I have been an active participant in the parent-teacher organization, which I am now, the co-chairing. And I have seen firsthand how important our small school is to each and every student who attends it. We have given back to the community with food and clothing drives, and we have been able to provide students with dances and other fun events that we would have never been able to properly fund if the school had two times or three times as many children attending. This does not even begin to describe the overwhelming amount of issues posed by moving the school out of the community miles away from the homes of the families who walk to school with their children every day. Some of these parents also bring younger siblings outside in the cold weather to be able to get their older children to school on time. I urge you to consider the devastating effects that will abundantly be caused by this merge and instead use the same funding to improve and expand on the schools that are already in the neighborhoods of the communities they serve, and thank you for your time. Now, with that said, I also feel the same as these two women. I know that I have very limited time to say my piece for Coleman, but my son has gone to Coleman, I have gone to Coleman, and I have also just seen Vernon Heights, their amazing performance and everything that they've been doing there, and they even stated that they love how warm and how connected they are at that school. I feel that we would honestly lose that feel if we merge all three elementary schools. And I honestly wish my nine-year-old son would have been able to speak again tonight as he did in December, because I am very proud of him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Here, we see none. I'll move on to recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coming to the school committee. I want to start my recognition and announcements by recognizing the amazing Vernon Heights Elementary School students who were here this evening, who are so proud of all the hard work that they obviously did to this nice presentation. I also want to thank the teachers and staff at Vernon Heights, who worked very hard with their students, as was, you know, evidence this evening with the presentation. I also want to thank Mr. DeRozier, as principal of Vernon Heights Elementary School. It was wonderful to see students take the assignment and making it into an interdisciplinary assignment, which means it's not just an English assignment, but a variety of subjects. It's music, art, reading, writing, presenting to an audience. So I want to thank them for a wonderful, wonderful season. Dolly Breeze and Observer Newspapers recently honored male and female student athletes for each of the circulations of 15 high schools in Rhode Island. They are all-around excellence in athletics and academics in all, all scholastic sports section. These student athletes are not only brilliant on the field, but also in the classroom. Two student athletes from Wood Socket High School who were recognized this year were Wood Socket High School senior Michael Sainte-Tyne, who's a football player at Wood Sackett High School, and Wood Sackett High School junior Farah Waver, who is on the girls' tennis team. Michael, one of the best line actors in Northern Rhode Island, became first-time, first-team all-division selection, as he led the Novans in tackles for a second year in a row during ninety games. He amassed 125 tackles, including 12 for a loss of yardage. A hard-hitting Michael Sainte-Tyne also shined on the other side of the ball as a fullback and carried the ball 19 times for 101 yards and three touchdowns. And on special teams, he turned in one of the biggest plays of the season in the Division Two Novans, 2-0 victory over Division One Central High School. He is a consistent presence on the school's honor roll, returned to the Rhode Avenue Scholastic League's all-academic team this year. Michael was also a standout career baseman on the Illinois Open's baseball team, so I want to congratulate Michael Sainte-Tyne for being named to that qualification. Farah is a second-year player who joined the Illinois Open's tennis program last year. With little experience in sport, Farah became the Novans' first singles player this season and posted double digits in victories to help her team reach the Division Three quarter finals. Farah, who won some big matches down the stretch, became a two-time all-division player. Last season, she did so in doubles, in helping lead the Illinois Open's to an 11-5 record and the Team Three semifinals. In the classroom, Farah is among the top of her class, has earned highest honors in all nine of her quarters thus far at Wood Sackett High School. So congratulations to those two amazing student athletes from Wood Sackett High School. Finally, over the years in the Sackett Education Department, students and their families have been very fortunate to receive generous donations of winter accessories and food vouchers to Wood Sackett Elks Lodge, number 850. Most recently, the Elks donated 321 winter coats to our elementary families. In addition, the Elks supplied the district with approximately $5,000 in food vouchers to ensure that our students and their families never go hungry during the winter shutdowns. We've worked with many organizations over the years, but I do have to say that the Elks Lodge, number 850, Wood Socket is such an energetic supporter and well-organized people. I'd like to specifically thank the Elks and Mr. Leo Turgeon for their continued support and generosity, showing not only to our children, but to the families here in Sackett. So I thank the Elks and thank Mr. Leo Turgeon. And that, Mr. Chairman, is my recognition and announcement.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any comments, questions about McGee? I'll make a motion to receive, place on file, recognitions and announcements, and we have a second.
Second.
Second, I'm Mr. O'Clair. All in favor, signify by sending aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll vote to the approval of minutes, and I'll make a motion to approve the December 20th, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to give our, Dr. McGee will call?
Chair Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghas, Mrs. Piskus. Mr. O'Clair.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the December 20th, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Mr. O'Clair. Any changes to those votes? Dr. McGee?
Chair Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghas, Mrs. Piskus.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to give our, Dr. McGee will call? Second, I want to take any item of good discussion. Dr. McGee?
Chair Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghas, Mrs. Piskus.
Yes. Mr. O'Clair. I believe we have no report from our student representative tonight, but did you have a good holiday, Spat?
Yes, I did, Nebraska. I hope you did too.
Yep. And you'd like to be back at school?
Yes, I am.
Really? Good! Outstanding! No. No, again, they're on vacation. Next, I'll ask you, Dr. McGee, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee has a list of new hires that we have been working on the last couple of weeks. You'll notice we have the social worker, full-time reading teacher, the social studies teacher at Hamilton Middle School, an English ESL teacher at Wood Sackett High School, and physical education teacher at Hamilton Middle School. District continues to make every effort to build meaningful positions. We are still short two custodians. We are still short two custodians, two administrators, thirteen teachers, and sixteen paraprofessionals. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions or comments for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports, and I'll ask Mrs. Kiskus to give us the C-Live update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Wunsaket C-Live, Madam Lowly, on Thursday, January fourth, at six p.m. On your old business, I made my usual plea for somebody to please succeed me as C-Live chair with my support and assistance all the way. On your new business, Ms. Morel reported back to us on Micass and DLM scores for students with IEPs or an alternate assessment. Though we view this district as not great, but looking at the school more individually without naming names, where there was improvement shown by schools as follows in the twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years compared to the twenty-twenty-one year. One elementary school did better than two times the state average in ELA. One elementary school did better than the state average in ELA. Four elementary schools made progress in ELA. Two elementary schools made progress in Math. Two middle schools made progress in ELA. And one middle school made progress in Math. Some schools, however, suffered significant increases in graduating entire districts as a whole, which is helpful that the new ELA program for students at the elementary school, middle school levels will help. South of the elementary schools and middle schools, resource teachers have been trained in youth-wide for reading and decoding and touch down for Math. Twenty teachers also took advantage of the PD offer of the most intriguing program. With regard to the DLM, which is the alternate assessment statewide testing, intensive PD offerings from staff for staff, along with much hard work from Kelly Girard, where he had allowed staff and students to realize improvements as a whole across the district. As a whole, fifty-one students were given the A alternate assessment of the ELM testing. The results were telling. Thirteen point seven percent proficiency in ELA in the district increased over the prior year. Thirteen point seven percent proficiency in Math increased over the prior year. Fourteen point three proficiency in Science increased over the prior year. Twenty-one students tested at the high school level, where proficiency levels did not increase, partially proficient levels did increase significantly. Elementary schools saw increases in proficiency as well as decreases in the non-proficient levels. Middle schools saw small increases in proficiency in ELA and Math, but a small decrease in Science. And talking casually after Ms. Morel reported back to us, we all agree that a gap test is needed for students who do not need the alternate assessment evaluation but cannot consistently be evaluated using the RIDE tests for the so-called gray area students. And all of us agree, Ms. Morel, Dr. Holt, myself, as a member of the RACAN, we've been fighting for a gap test dating back to, if you're a member of the Commissioner of Education, General Counsel. And we've made no progress thus far. And it's really fortunate. Our Superintendent, Dr. McGee, reported to us that the school accountability results and start rates are now at that time of currently embargoed. Presidents and directors will have access to them starting on Monday, January eighth. Contract negotiation date now available online on RIDE's website. Contract negotiations will be underway with all three unions teachers, Paris, at eleven thirty-seven by February, with proposals exchanged upon return for February vacation. Those to have these technical contracts in place by the time school ends in June. A report from Special Education, Ms. Morel reported that in February, March, the WPD will have a schools support system review, with AEPs occurring at the schools beginning March eighteenth and March twenty-first. The IEP facilitator training program will occur on January twenty-fifth and January twenty-sixth. The WPD has been selected to send five staff to training. They will include the Special Ed Director, the Assistant Director, and the Chairs at each educational level of Special Education. And School Committee, we are honored, reporting back that we have a school committee meeting tonight at seven p.m. We will be on. The next policy subcommittee meeting is on January sixteenth, four p.m. at Hamlet, Room One Twenty-Four. Next curriculum subcommittee meeting is on January thirtieth, three p.m., not to be thirty p.m. at Hamlet, Room Twenty-Four. The next meeting of C-Live will be remotely on February first, twenty twenty-four, at six p.m. And I included a link in the notes that I sent out to all the members of the C-Live that includes my C-Live report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Kiskus. Any questions, comments, for us? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the C-Live update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Nutterbriani to give us his technology and facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, that means evening, as of today, we have ninety-seven work orders in system for technology and we're interested in possibly solving those issues. We should have more data to see as of last week. The data staff is currently preparing for March first snapshot report, which is the second and final component of the state funding formula. Once that's complete, the state will raise the funding for next school year, and others that introduce funding formula. In addition to that, the data staff are currently working on supporting data collection. I think this is, Dr. Holt, with some of the data that is reported from the government. I've announced also, this is Ms. Morel. Student registration is nothing reported this time. It's still here in time right now. As of today, facilities and service, we have one hundred and ninety-eight work orders in the system. They are working as fast as they can, as you witnessed this week. There are a lot that they need to address, home vacancies. And currently working on the distribution of furniture at the high school. So most of the furniture came in over the holiday season, and they've been pushing it all to the classrooms and the school hours. They are wrapping up final touches on the science lab renovations of the one thirty-seven. They are doing the installation of white walls at the high school. They're finishing that up. Auditorium renovation, that should not be on here of any tractor cars. It is definitely, Farah will report the evening on the lunch list, which are the late high school and the tractor cars at this school and their store. We all await. He should be working such an anxious. Back to, was above the high school renovations. Do include the upcoming work for the high school. Gymnasium and locker rooms. We also have renovations at Haver School in terms of library media center, gymnasium cafeteria. Both your school renovations, library media center, gymnasium cafeteria. And this evening, they studied the window treatments at the high school, which is supported here. Transportation. We are now meeting two of the additional buses, and with close in mind, you may arrive at the partridge times. Here, School Services will provide a report to Facility Subcommittee in February. And safety and security, additional radios. I do not arrive, because Mayor June can hear, which will be the lead in final purchase of radios, which the school committee authorized back in December. Communication APs were installed over the holiday break before we were currently in this month. And we will be, Mr. Burghes.
Thank you, Mrs. Nutterbriani. Any questions or comments?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burghes.
At the center of the additional radios that do not arrive, so that the mayor can show, how many radios are we talking about there? The fact that we don't have them right now, obviously, Mayor June's school is over, but the fact that we don't have them right now.
So, well, I would consider it an issue. Mr. Burghes, presently, we have three hundred and forty radios deployed throughout the district, which is more than we've ever had. And five hundred, and these are not walkie-talkies you buy at an electronics store. But yes, but yes, yes. So, uh, I'm just, Perry, you're here. So, these are not walkie-talkies that didn't work within the high school, cancel them. These are registered, the FCC, they're very expensive. We purchased, we received a request of three hundred and fifty-seven. We did an initial purchase of three hundred and forty. We did additional purchase a few months back of fifty-six. And then most recently, this school committee opened in December another hundred and twenty-five. So when we're done, we're going to have a total of four hundred and sixty radios in the district. And that's, that's, we're almost one to one in terms of what staff, and just getting that to what staff we're reaching. This would be more than enough. I know there was a discussion with Facility Subcommittee about a concern and a public interest that we wanted more of, we could have something immediately, but we want to understand for more time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Kiskus?
I have a quick question on radios. I'm going to presume, these are not going to be a public channel to give the list to like a scanner, right?
No, no, these are, these are, these are registered. They're self-contained within our system. You should not be able to pick them up on a typical public scanner. All they are is the FCC. Which brings up an interesting point. We did have, I'm trying to make sure that they follow protocols. Prior to the radios were buying, they had walkie-talkies, and some of them were walkie-talkies. Privacy should be in public records. Should no student needs going over it or anything that could be identified back to individual students. So I'm confident that our principals have had that conversation. I know that this school, this thing was written out, I was present with that conversation. So even if there were to occur, we're waiting to find out.
That is one of my concerns. My other concern was, when there is an incident at a school, my concern is if there was something that parents could listen to. The last thing we need over time is locked out of school because there's some threat, is a bunch of parents showing up trying to dismiss their children. And I just don't want that in this situation. Certainly, I have no issue with people having some arguments when it's going on, but first your condition is under control. And that's, that's one of my concerns about something that access this radio to find out something that's going on at, let's say, the high school.
I would hope, Mrs. Kiskus, that that would not be the case because we contract, it includes side communications, which is the purple vendor for public safety across the state. So I'd like to think that they've done all this. I'll be quite frank with you, I'm going to be making home calls tomorrow. I'm sure that we've got privacy in place. But what was registered to the FCC wasn't just, uh, very sophisticated. You could use a radio from one side of the city, although, you know, it's a little in Massachusetts. They're, um, they're, they're.
So essentially, you can't speed us. Okay. Thank you.
There's no escaping with time. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to give our Dr. McGee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into unfinished business. And this first item was tabled last time, so I'll make a motion to remove from the table the first item, which is a discussion approval on the Wunsaket High Auditorium Architect Contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. Will call Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghes. Yes. Mrs. Kiskus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
So this item now is before us. I'll turn it over to Dr. McGee and Mr. Perry. Oh, yeah. We need a motion to discuss and approve the Auditorium Architect Contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. Mr. Perry and Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, the district is still working through the approval process on this final amendment that RGB did put in front of us with the Department of Education. We still have not had that resolved, so we have nothing to present to you.
So should we table this till the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we can table it again. And I can provide you an update. This is something that's high priority of ours. We're trying to work through it, which is taking a little longer than it is.
Or is it something that should be taken off the agenda so that it can come back later on? Because if this is not going to happen this meeting, why don't you table it?
Yeah, it's kind of out of my hands right now, so, um, yeah. I think it's fine to take it off the agenda, and then when we do have a finalized report and a contract, we can bring it back then. I think that's, I think that's acceptable.
So I'll make that motion to remove from the agenda discussion approval on the high school auditorium architect contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghes. Yes.
Yes.
Number two, this item was also tabled on last meeting, so I'll make a motion to remove from the table a discussion approval on the location of the new elementary school at Barrow Field. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to give our Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burghes. Yes. Mrs. Kiskus. Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the location of the new elementary school at Barrow Field. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Leclerc. Now, this item was tabled last time because the building committee did not have an opportunity to review this item and to vote on it because it was not on our agenda. Well, reporting tonight, the building committee met before this meeting at five o'clock here in Hamilton, and unanimously, the building committee voted to approve the location of the new elementary school at Barrow Field. And attended, and part of the building committee includes members of the school committee, the administration, the mayor, the project manager, members of the community, members of the city council. And unanimously approved it. And what we're looking to do is, if the school committee approves this tonight, we will be planning community meetings. Because I really hate at least two to three of them. I mean, three of them at all the three locations with the three communities. This is a very complex project. It began with the J-Blues Report back in two thousand seventeen that identified certain of our schools that were so far below standard that they should be torn down or not be refurbished. And in conjunction with that, RIDE supported the combination of removing three schools and combining them into one big school. And as a result, the district received a hundred million dollars with a ninety-four percent rebate to that. If we don't do this, and we only decided to rehab our schools, we wouldn't have the funds. And the funds would be just like it was in previous years. We wouldn't have anything to fix schools that the state has deemed we shouldn't be doing those schools. So we, we are, we are, we have a project manager. We will be getting engineers and contractors coming up with one for our, it's soon. run far but not soon. The first step in phase three was to identify the location, and this is a great location. And let's remember, the school committees, our forefathers have been, and we have been holding this land for 97 years. And it is deemed for athletic fields and educational facilities. If we don't go in for the year, especially for the benefit of our children, our children, our current children and our future children, we're missing the vote, especially when we have a once in a lifetime opportunity to do the right thing. So, you know, I recommend that we do this, that we do vote this. So I'll open it up to discussion. Anyone?
Chairman, Dr. McKeever, I concur with everything you say. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. And, you know, who wants to, you know, I think your words were about the place.
Mr. Stevens?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman, which I think will answer some of the questions that are a lot of the committee. Can this 100 million dollars be used to rehab those three schools?
No.
Thank you.
No. Because we would lose it. That was one of the conditions. Maybe we'd get the 100 million if we followed through with this program. And R I D has been with us and has advised us throughout the process from phase one, through phase two, and now in part of phase three. Any thoughts?
Sorry.
Mr. Leclerc?
They say circumstances are everything. The circumstances are now, we've definitely had many forms of severity personally that we need to move on this. I think we're in a positive, I think we should move forward.
Dr. McGee, I was just going to add, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not sure if you mentioned this in the beginning, but when, when R I D came to us and said, you have an opportunity to receive 100 million dollars or so, they, they said that while some communities are remodeling individual schools here, they're looking for newer and fewer. And when I'm saying newer and fewer, I mean newer schools and fewer schools, fewer schools in the district. And as you referred to the Jacob's Report in 2017, those three schools were deemed, you know, irreparable in terms of being remodeled or, or being rebuilt. They would need to be replaced completely. So, you know, as you said, this, this is a, this is a, I always thought a once in a lifetime opportunity because I'm hoping that as the years progress, we'll receive more money from, from the state to, to do work, you know, throughout the district. But this is an opportunity for, for students and families at three of our elementary schools that would need to be just, just not, not, not able to repair. And it was an extensive report, Jacob's Report. So this is a wonderful opportunity for our students, for our community. You know, as, as I, as I travel with the state and I see new schools coming up in other districts, I say to myself, why not in Socken? And this is our opportunity to provide a state of the art elementary school to our students. But right now, we don't have a state of the art elementary school.
One of the, one of the things that R I D mentioned right at the beginning, it made it clear that this money is, we call it once in a lifetime, and I hope to buy it is. But they also mentioned that the city in Socken is in low position to go off the bond. So there is, it's not like we could go off money through the city to get monies to repair and refurbish. So when R I D presented to us this opportunity, we followed through and then we ran the process. Any other comments? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Next, we'll go into new business. The first item, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the graduation policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Leclerc. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Piscus, and Vice Chair Burke.
Well, I went over basically what we had done in our last policy that we're going to be, like, in some ways before, before you. Essentially, what we did was we added the graduation requirement, and then that 2020 means it's clear that the rules for education and those are not currently in place. One of the big discussions was whether or not this was going to be a broad date, but we should have to have all the credits accumulated in order to, you know, whether or not you were going to receive a diploma and/or some or more of the policy stage or graduation. And there were some districts that do have a whole process by when people are notified. It is a broad date date, the rates have been amended. And our policy simply requires that the plans be before graduation, which is very interpreted by the principle of importance for destiny as we amend the rating period for seniors of the fourth quarter. At this point, the high school administration does not, rather than oppose any additional changes to that. I know it seems rather wishy washy, but to some degree, it has to be wishy washy because the whole point is that you have a student that's trying to implement those credits or whatever it means. We don't want to disturb them because our, our job is to educate students against the higher school diploma. So we don't want to make a part of that broad date date that you're credited by this date before you're done. We did a mixed provision for an August graduation ceremony for students who learn the credits subsequent to the June graduation. They will get their, they will be a modified graduation ceremony in August. Those high school students can complete their credits later. That's all the product.
I think it's exciting that we have this second graduation exercise because we know some students at this last graduation, the council came over and thanked you all in the cities. I wish you had to walk across the state, but I couldn't quite finish. This way you have the incentive to complete. Now, is that going to be in effect now, or is this start next year?
It's effective this year.
This year?
Okay. We're just working out the hot details. We're looking at what other districts are doing. There are other districts that do this.
Okay.
With the time.
Any other thoughts, questions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss, approve the amendments to the non-union benefits policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Leclerc. Mr. Piscus. Vice Chair Burke.
Essentially, these changes were really to update the policy. Essentially, they could move the policies, and some is just a policy, not an employment contract, because our attorneys both considered it more of a transition to employment contract. As a result, all references to the respective bargaining agreements were removed. Longevity language in the section two of the policies that are updated to promote the current circumstances will be retroactive to July 1, 2023. Appendix A1, part of the policy, appendix A2, removed because the only staff number referenced has since retired. There was subsequently some discussion as to whether or not they should be clarified with regard to when longevity pay is paid out. And I spoke to Mr. Correa, and he advised that TAs and teachers, their longevity is split. They pay for a year, whereas, as number 37, their longevity is paid once a year, and it's paid for the prior fiscal year, usually paid in September, but again, for the prior fiscal year. And I sent an email to our council and asked whether or not we love that she included the policy. I didn't receive a response, but I suspected they were going to say defer to the collective bargaining agreement because what the collective bargaining agreement controls. Am I speaking out of turn?
Yeah, that was my question. Sorry. I was just lying.
I apologize for not recalling that email, but is the question when it should be paid out for non-union members?
The question is, should the policy itself be amended either by this, by or go back to policy, which I think it's minutia. Just to clarify and write how the longevity is paid out, so there is no question among union and non-union members.
Well, this document only controls non-union practice.
Right.
So whatever physically makes most sense is controlled. There's no need to make it reference the collective bargaining agreement. So I, I don't think it needs to be put back into the document or put into the document. And I think the fiscal leadership has the ability to do it in a way that makes most sense.
Mr. Perrier, our chairman?
I agree.
Well said.
It's the grand ball. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about commending it unless there's some massive delay in the payment.
No, we're making payments currently. There's no delay or anything.
Anything else?
Dr. McKeever?
I'm assuming with that, I just recommend that we. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss, approve, to rescind the P6 series non-certified personnel in the school committee policy manual. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Ms. Piscus, Vice Chair Burke, for the third time.
I'm not seconding anything. I just want you to say.
Oh, my goodness.
And reviewing the policy with the council in our last meeting, it was recommended that you rescind, remove all of these P6, 1, 2, 3, 4, and by the 6, and 7 of those subparts because essentially, it's all covered by collective bargaining agreements or contractual agreements. Some of theirs pay to be legal and usual, so they were S R C. It was being superseded by collective bargaining or other collective agreements. And so they will be written that they will be rescinded.
Sarah?
I certainly can support that recommendation.
Okay. Anyone? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss, approve the Sajana House survey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee?
Mr. Chairman, so the committee has, in their agenda, a Socken student response initiative survey. And incidentally, I made this presentation to the panel of the board and subcommittee at their recent subcommittee meeting. And so what, what this basically is, is we have a partnership with the Sajana House. And what that means is that we work with Selena Gibbs, who comes into our schools and works with our students around educating them, around TDA by awareness. She's been working with the district for a couple of years. And as part of this partnership, they have put together a student survey, which will be a volunteer anonymous survey that we provide to student hall students at the high school through their advisory, where they would be asking students to reflect on or answer, answer questions on campus climate, as well as TDA by awareness. This, the results of the, you know, survey itself would then be used. Again, it's not just we don't need to look it up, but it would be used for Sajana House to continue to provide support to our youth here in the district. So I am presenting this to the committee in questions that they have our committee in the seat of. So I'm just looking for your approval so that Sajana House can provide this to our, our students and continue to support them around TDA by awareness.
Comments, questions?
There's one question. Dr. McGee, please tell us the bits you heard.
We do, yes.
And I'm going to.
Anyone else?
Do you, as a superintendent, get the results of that? Are you permit to those?
So I certainly can get the results, yes. In fact, I, I would want to see the results because I am naturally a bit curious to see what the students are, are experiencing, what they're witnessing, such as, and also so that I have a better sense of, based off of the results, what we need to do to support our students.
When you do that, can you come back with a report for that for us?
Sure. There'd be numbers, really, but just to make sure.
Yeah.
So we can use those numbers.
Okay. Next. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss, approve, in increasing the teacher substitute pay for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier?
I'll start, and you really want to jump in and add anything to it. So the committee is, is well aware that we have had, as have, as do many districts, both the state and throughout the country, are finding very difficult to find substitute teachers. We, we have a pretty, pretty, pretty large need on a daily basis. And unfortunately, what we are, are, have to resort to many times is teachers covering classes, which, which makes it very challenging to, number one, to provide, you know, a, a, the instruction services that are, that are still to be now. Substitute teachers obviously now are seen as their teacher, but it is still someone who can utilize the lesson plans that the teacher has provided for the substitute. But my point is, we just can't find substitutes. So my proposal to the committee this evening is, I'm hopeful that by offering more money to substitutes, it will cause them to say, hey, Socken's paying much more than, than, you know, say Cumberland, and they might be more inclined to sub here in Socken. Socken, Rhode Island's interesting. We've all, you know, we've all lived in Rhode Island, close to our lives. And if you have to travel above, you know, Northern Province, it's another galaxy. So Socken tends to be, you know, at, at community up north where, you know, you need to pack a lunch. So hopefully, by increasing our sub page 100 dollars a day, that will provide more of an incentive for substitutes to, to come here. And so what we're looking to do is we're looking to do this for the remainder of the school year. This funds will come out of our S R funds, our S R three funds. And we will evaluate at the end of the year whether or not, you know, increasing the sub rate to 200 dollars, you know, had an impact on, on some of the teachers. That's something we can do in the year to see. Yes, we're getting more subs, and it's working nicely. And we will then look to maintain the rate for if it hasn't really been a difference in education, we will then revert back to.
How much, how much do our subs make right now? What do they get?
So.
It's graduated field. Everybody starts at 100 dollars, then to 110, then to 130, then a step after every 45 days worth. So a step is like two change. That's after 135 days. If they sub for 135 days during the year, look at that step one.
So right now, we would increase step one to 200. Is that what they're saying?
Yeah, it's going to be 200 across the board for those.
How do we, how would that measure against what other communities?
If you look around, if you look around the state, a lot of the urban communities are at 200 dollars right now. So, you have the data there? Go ahead and read it up.
So I had done a survey about districts. Close to us, we even checked some of the Massachusetts. So for example, Goldenham is 110 a day. Blackstone is 90, where old 100. Santa Falls is 200. North Rapids is 150, Vettucker is 125. So this is the idea of similar communities. So we're hopefully hiring them until we get them to come to life.
If we had a full conference, what do you see of fiscal rate?
I, I estimated it at about 533,000 dollars for the rest of this year. We based it on how many subs we used so far this year. We did add some extra fills in with the thought that more people will be subbing because we do run a lot of vacancies every day. So we'd be averaging about 24 subs a day. I think if we can attract another two to three subs a day, I think that would really be significant and really help out a lot.
And that's quite, quite a good amount.
What we're going to do is we're going to move, the committee approves it, we're going to move all the expense for subs to S R three for the rest of the year. So, yeah, that's going to be about a half a million dollars by doubling the, the rate for the rest of the year.
So existing subs and new subs, which are.
Correct.
So you all, it's going to be a one afternoon.
Absolutely, yeah. And again, this will give us a little more flexibility in the J O P on this year because I could be taking off the, you know, the other part of the sub expense to J O P. We'll charge it off the S R three for the rest of this year.
And that's if we get it.
Yeah, that's if we get it, yeah. I mean, that's the hope is that we do pick up some.
Okay.
But again, I think this is a good test to really evaluate if this is the problem with getting subs here. And we can definitely report back to the committee and let them know what we're thinking going in next year.
Vice Chair Burke?
Have potential applicants, like, turn down their job because they says, oh, you don't pay enough? Have you heard that from applicants?
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Piscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Have you know what other items on our agenda? I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:09 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Burke, all members taking five, we're saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.